Good evening, welcome to Neighborhood Board fourteen. Just a couple administrative announcements. First of all, if you have your cellphone, please turn it off. And if you want to be recognized, please raise your hand, especially those on WebEx so that we can recognize you. All right, let's see. You feel lonesome over there? I think they're gonna show up. Don't worry. If not, I'll send Dale over there. Okay, first off, on the fire department. You know what I like about the fire department? They come in, they come, you know, in a group, you know, that's called support.
Hi, everybody. I'm firefighter one Lippman. I'm from Station Four. I'm on Engine Four over at Kuakini. Just to let you guys know right now, we are still in service, so if we get a call and gotta go, we gotta get out of here. The statistics for this for March twenty twenty five, we had zero structure fires, zero wildland brush fires, zero nuisance fires, one cooking fire, and two activated alarms with no fires. We had one hundred and twenty-one medicals, one motor vehicle collision with pedestrian, two motor vehicle crash slash collision, zero mountain rescues, zero ocean rescues, and one hazmat material instance. And then our safety tip for this month is talking about smoke alarms. Smoke alarms are crucial for saving lives and play a key role in a home fire escape plan. When installed properly and maintained correctly, they provide early alerts, giving occupants the chance to evacuate quickly. Should install them in every bedroom, outside each separate sleeping area like a hallway, and each on, one on each level of the home, at least one. Test smoke alarms at least once a month by pushing that test button, and then replace them every ten years or whenever they stop responding to the test. And then if no more questions, we're gonna go ahead and get back into service.
Any questions from the board? About the audience? No, thank you very much. Keep us safe. Thank you, guys. All right, next, actually, I was about to say, let's, let's have a roll call now that I think most, well, I don't know, not everybody, but most of us are here. I want to see, make sure we have a quorum. If we do, go ahead.
Oh, Chair Fong. Higa. Not here yet. Kaapu. Makawai.
Yeah.
Mitsuda.
Here.
Na'aua'au'ota. Pain. Yamamoto. White. Nita.
Here.
Kentru.
Here.
Christian. Not here. Nine members present. We have one.
And the chair is here, too. It's okay. Cora, you're here. Cora said she was gonna be. She didn't feel too good. Not yet? She isn't. All right. Thank you. On the police department.
Good evening. Lieutenant Yamashita here. Go over the statistics for the month of Fe- February real quick. So for aggravated assaults, we had three. Auto thefts, we had seven. Burglaries, we had seven. Robberies, we had zero. We had one sex assault. We had three simple assaults. We had fifteen thefts. And then we had four car break-ins. We had a total calls for service were twelve hundred and thirty-four for the month of February. I'm gonna go over the sex assault case real quick. It was pretty much a juvenile female. Had a sleepover. A suspect touched her inappropriately. She reported it to her mother. The mother called police. We documented the case. And the mother did not want to prosecute or press any charges at this time. And I also wanted to touch up on the aggravated assault that we had in the Launa Keela area. So that one officers were dispatched to the area of Launa Keela on reports of gunshots and people screaming. So officers arrived and they learned that an adult male suffered a gunshot wound. He was transported to a nearby hospital, treated for, treated for his injuries in critical condition. The suspect, however, fled the scene before officers arrived. It was assigned to a detective and throughout the investigation, they learned that a suspect was involved. They identified later on, and he was positively identified and arrested and charged for this, for the crime. Other than that, I also have Sergeant Martinez online. Let's see if he has any further information for you folks. Sarge?
Good evening. You guys can hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Just wanted to introduce myself. Somebody might know me. I'm with the, I used to be with the community policing team. I'm still working with them. I'm currently admin sergeant in Kalii. But one thing I did want to bring up, something that we're trying to bring back this year that we should be getting more information to some of the neighborhood security watch members are interested, we're planning to bring back National Night Out this year. And it's gonna be, right now, it's looking, it's gonna be in Waikiki. I'll get more information on that. It's supposed to be, right now, it's set for August fifth. Some of you that have been to it in the past know about it. It's kind of a, it's kind of a fun event to have for the, for the neighbor security watchers. It's been absent for a while, so we're, we're trying to bring it back. The more, when I get more information, I'll be able to give you guys more. We're just trying to keep in, in mind.
Thank you. Any questions? Let me just say, I want to thank the police department. If you recall last meeting, we had a problem with some homeless guy up in top of Leva Heights going through every garage and stealing food and stealing stuff up there, and we didn't know where he was. But we have had no complaints about him, so I guess he disappeared thanks to the police department having a roaming patrol up there and checking up on that area. So thank you. Can I say that actually, for our neighborhood, we have had no serious new phrase, serious felonies? I don't, you know, like shootings. I mean, you know, we're we just had one, yeah, but I mean, but I mean, I don't, I don't know what the cause was, but you know, guys getting out there and playing wider for whatever it is.
Now you gotta knock on woodchairs.
Is that a fair statement?
That's a fair statement, but now you gotta knock on some woodchairs.
Oh, knock, wait a second. Oh, right, right there. All right, I got it. All right, good, all right. Yeah, because
Thank you.
neighborhood is supposed to be secure and safe and, you know, so thank you very much, keeping us safe and secure. Any questions from the board or comments? Go ahead, Henry.
My question is, I, I've been hearing a lot more about juveniles and guns. Is this more like gang-related type of thing, KPT against mayor rights type of situation, or Launa Keela against mayor rights? I mean, give us some history or background on what is happening.
So the gun violence is, we have an uptick because of the ghost guns that are produced by 3D printers or the people that are bringing it in and they're ordering the parts online and putting it together. So it's just ending up in the wrong hands at the time. So the juveniles do get it. Yes, some of them is contributed to gang violence where it's the housing personnel or housing juveniles having a war or turf war against others, but it's not necessarily the only contributing factor, but it is, it is that also. Our Crime Reduction Unit is working on taking care of that and finding out the root problem for it.
Any other questions for the board? I got. Go ahead, Don.
You know, against assault, did the police recover the weapon, the gun?
So unfortunately, we didn't recover the gun, but we did recover casings and detectives did do their, I guess, their analysis with it. But no, no gun was recovered for that. But we did charge, detectives did charge the juvenile that was involved in the incident.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? About the audience? How about anybody on WebEx? Okay, if not, thank you HPD. It's moving along. Border Water Supplies.
Evening. I'm online. Sorry, can't be there. Can you hear me?
Hi.
Hi, sorry. Hopefully, it's fast tonight. I'm gonna read what they gave me to read. So we're hiring. So thirsty for a stable career? The Border Water Supply is hiring. We have open positions in engineering, information technology, customer care, and administrative roles. So enjoy great benefits, job security, and the opportunity to grow and make a difference. It's time to turn on the valve to a new career that matters. So apply today at borderwatersupply.com/jobs or call eight oh eight seven four eight five one six zero. So just a quick announcement, and that's all. There's any questions?
That's it?
Yeah, short, to the point. Hopefully, you guys, someone applies.
Is, is there any age limit?
I don't think so. I think anybody should be able to apply. There's no
I gotta, I gotta ask my wife first, yeah. Actually, you shouldn't have any problems. I mean, heaven, there's gonna be a flood of ex-federal employees, right?
Unfortunately, maybe. I'm, hopefully, they get their jobs back, but if not, come on over to the city and the Border Water Supply especially.
That's, that's sad, but anyway. Any questions from the board? Any applicants? Oh, I'm sorry. Anybody from the audience? No? Thank you, Iris. Hope to see you here.
See you. Hopefully, next month. Yes. Okay, bye-bye.
All right, item number three, vacancies. We have a vacancy in District Four, Subdistrict Four. Anybody interested? Don't all come up at once? I guess not. Okay, moving along. Resident concerns. Any resident concerns? Oh, everybody's happy. Okay. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna take, oh, we're gonna take, take that up. And under elected officials, so stay tuned. We're talking about the New Wana Bay Street crosswalk. Anybody else have any other concerns? Okay, moving right along. Any reports of members of attendance at other meetings that may be of interest to our board? You guys are pointing to each other. Which one do you want to talk? All right, go ahead, Carol.
Representative Ikaihahasi had a town hall in House District Twenty-nine last week, and it was in regards to various programs that might lose federal funding, and so we had a bunch of different folks come in from Boy Public Housing, Kokou, Kalii Valley, those who work with immigrants, and I'm missing one more. But anyway, yeah, so it was, it was fairly informative, and each, each group gave a little bit about where, what they're doing and, and what, how they're preparing for changes, and so Donald and I both attended.
Yes, you go ahead. Don?
I attended the beat police department, police officers at McDonald's at Waikamiko. Very interesting. Met the major, met the lieutenant, I met the sergeant. Right now, yeah, we have a pretty good police department for District Five.
Good. Anybody else? Any questions? Okay, moving right along. Let's see, Ompo. Cora's not here. Do you have a report, Karen? Okay, we'll pass on Ompo. Elected officials. Ed, you have a lot, I know. And by the way, Ed is gonna report also in regards to the presentations that were supposed to be presented by DTS. So he's gonna cover that, okay?
Hello and good evening. Edward Losmalos, Deputy Director, Department of Community Services. I'm the mayor's rep for the Liha Neighborhood Board. First, to start off with a few updates from the mayor. Next, next week, State of the City, the following week, we're gonna follow that up. We're starting a series of seven town halls will be coming through different regions of the island. Other than that, we have the Wahipana Art Initiative that I announced, I think, last month or the month before that, the million-dollar grant that we got from Harvard Bloomberg. We're starting to debut the installations right now, being around the Waikiki area and Chinatown. So we have one in Port Street Mall. We also had other installations in the Leahi area as well as Port Hursey. We also have a reminder in here for folks to take a look at the flood insurance rate maps that just got published and redone. We're right now in the comment period where you can kind of comment or make any rebuttals on the new, the new updated maps. If you're not familiar with what happens if you're in one of those flood zones or one of those new flood zones, your insurance premiums will likely go up for flood insurance, so take a look, be aware, and if you do have a comment to make, now's the time to do it. I think the comment post, the comment period closes on June tenth, but right now, we're live in it. Starts March, well, actually, it starts on March thirteenth, we didn't start yet, but it runs to June tenth. Relative to the updates from the prior actions that I have, Aleva and Mamalu intersection concern. So Transportation Services went out, took another, took another look at the intersection. They do agree that the signage could be better. So they're making, they're making some upgrades to the signage in that area to clearly demarcate the no parking zones on either side to avoid the pollution that's been raised by this board on numerous occasions. So this pain and sign work, they did generate a pain and sign work order number three five one four seven, and that will be executed by the Department of Facilities Maintenance. If you have any questions or want any updates regarding that work order three five one four seven, you can contact DFM at eight oh eight seven six eight eight three two one or eight oh eight seven six eight eight three two two, and they'll get you an update on the progress on that work order. Another intersection of concern was Alaneel near Launa Keela. Department of Transportation Services is asking for more time to complete the study for that area. After they do that, they'll give me the update, and they'll, we'll be able to provide that to this neighborhood board. Another intersection that was raised in previous meetings, Kapalama and Hala Drive. ETS is recommending that that will become a four-way stop and always stop. Prior to execution of that, they will be providing a official letter to the neighborhood board, and they also need to do some other administrative work as it relates to posting a notice to motorists of the updated change to that intersection.
So they're still under study, or are they gonna do something?
They're gonna do a four-way stop. They're gonna implement a four-way stop there, but ahead of that, they gotta do the notice to the neighborhood board as well as the community about the update to the intersection, so people don't treat it like
You heard that, Donald? After ten years?
Well, at least I'm gonna get what I wanted. Thank you.
The not-so-good news I have is on that Eighth Street and New Wana Avenue crosswalk. So Department of Transportation Services did express their reservations on that. The federal, the manual that they have from the Federal Highway Administration relative to the multiple lanes, high-volume roads such as New Wana Avenue indicate, or the guidance in the Federal Highways Administration manual indicates that the crosswalk should not be remarked unless substantial improvements such as raised medians or pedestrian-activated traffic signals are installed. So those, as it goes with the Complete Streets, will be scheduled with the future roadway improvements and resurfacing of that, of New Wana Avenue.
Can you repeat that again? What are they gonna do? They're not gonna do anything.
No current action is, ETS is not advising any current action at this time because the Federal Highways Administration Manual, Road Manual that they have indicates that the improvement should not be made due to the multiple lane situation you have there as well as the high traffic in the area. So unless, in the absence of having substantial improvements for pedestrian safety, they're not recommending, and they're not gonna proceed with the crosswalk in that area.
Do you want to take questions now, or do you want to wait till you finish your report?
I can take the questions now. I'm not a DTS person, so I won't have answers.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna have whoever is interested to come up, and yes. First to the board, first the board. One second. And then, then I'm gonna have any of the Oh, you're DTS. Oh, all right. Well, come on up. Yeah, definitely. Go for it.
Kali Akasaki, Department of Transportation Services, Renee SPL, Complete Streets Coordinator could not make it, so she asked me to attend in her presence. I'm with the Traffic Engineering Division. I've been here before for all of our projects. Kuakini is one of them. So, yes, so we did talk about the New Wana and Bates intersection. What we can do in lieu of DDC's coming in to resurface the whole roadway and put in a few, a huge concrete median is we can put in temporary medians, which will be like made out of plastic delineators, kind of similar to like Camp Four, where it's the curbing and the delineators build a refuge island, and then we can probably put the crosswalk back. So we're still looking at it. As in addition to other improvements along New Wana, we have solar-powered RFBs, which is a rapid-flashing pedestrian beacon. You can push the button and it'll flash. We are a little concerned that the pace, our location by Bates just has too much tree cover, that the solar-powered ones don't work, although the solar-powered driver feedback sign is still working, and that one's been for about twenty years. So we are looking at other measures. We don't have anything specific yet. Once we do have a design, we'll share it with the board, and we'll let you know when we can implement it.
Well, I want to thank you very much for coming. So now I'm gonna ask any questions. Carol, you're first.
Yes, having done all the Complete Streets with you folks, what's the timeline? Haven't heard anything for a long time.
Okay, so we, of course, the biggest thing is funding. So DDC's project is on hold because of funding. They don't have enough money to do the resurfacing. I think the last estimate that they had to do all the Complete Streets, wind the sidewalks, do the medians, do the RFBs were like thirteen million dollars. What we're looking at and what we have funding for is a federal grant, Safe Streets For All. It is already guaranteed, so they can't take it back. We're looking at quick build. So anything that's the plastic delineator, signing, striping, no heavy concrete work, no big traffic signal work, we can do the solar-powered signs and push buttons. So we do have about four million dollars for the island to do it, and we're looking at high injury areas. So the lower part of New Wana will get two, and they will be at New Wana at Iliahi and New Wana at Kawila Street, kind of lower by Soto Mission. Those two will get solar-powered, push-button, rapid-flashing beacons. And then we also have the Liha Street. We have four on School Street. School Street's kind of similar. During the peak times, it's four lanes. When there's AMPM parking, it's down to two lanes, right? So it's a little bit tricky for us to kind of put things out there, but when there's no parking and the buses run full four lanes, it's hard for us to build medians or bobots to help. So we are proposing four on School Street. Alpuni, HoHaku, HoKea, and Old Palama Street.
Back to the Bates and New Wana. Anybody else have any questions? Leanna, you have? Come on up. Come on up.
Also, as for timeline, we're thinking hopefully in the next six months or so, we can kind of get designs out and put out these quick builds.
Good. Now, Leanna's from the Neighborhood Board. Patrol, yes, but on
Longtime member.
Longtime member.
Church, that sidewalk, I mean, that crosswalk has been there for many, many years. And I don't know why we're imposing federal highway guidelines on a city street. We've been there. And I don't understand that, for one. And secondly, this rapid-flashing thing. Yeah, I saw it in the news. They had one on School Street, right? And Alpuni or whatever it is. And I'm happy for them, but we try to get that. Carol Fukunaga, our former city councilwoman, applied for it, got the appropriation, but it was shelved. We were first in line. Come on, you guys, and you're gonna put it down the street? Down the street by Soto Temple or Mission? Those are kind of leveled. We have traffic. The condominium people want to cross the street to take the bus to go to work. We have seniors that want to come pick up their grandkids at the schools. What about us? And what's the timeline? This has been more than five years. Jesus is gonna call me before I get to see this crosswalk. I need an answer. I don't know why it was kicked down the road. Why are the others having more priority than us? And if it's a canopy not having the solar, you're right, the solar mileage thing is still working. Then trim the trees a little bit. It's overgrown anyway, and if we have a hurricane, that thing's gonna come tumbling down. We need to have that looked at as well. It's not like one piece and not the other piece. They're all connected. Please do something. That's it on the calling.
Thank you. Would you like to respond to that?
No, I understand, and it's been in the works, and when DDC was supposed to do the funding, which was about four years ago, when Carol was councilmember, you know, that was all, you know, ready to be done. I believe something came up in Tatlas and the funding moved to there. We know about the trees. We know about, you know, the speeding, so we are trying to address it. We're trying to say six months, which is why that location would have the median to kind of slow them down as well, and not just the push buttons, which would just flash. So we do hear the community, and we're trying to get something out there.
Well, I'm gonna leave it on the agenda. It's been on the agenda for a long time, so please come on back and let us know what the progress is.
In addition to that, I just wanted to share, we do have a lot of complaints that come in from Craig's side about speeding. So we do have a work order in to Ed Sniffens and his group at DOT to help us to see if they can put in two speed humps up by the graveyard. So we are proposing that for the the crossing and the area of Craig's side there.
Okay, so we'll wait and see, see what happens.
Things are in the works.
Yeah, please, expedite before, as long as we're still around. I speak for myself. But thank you. Any other questions or any comments? Yes. Henry?
I, I've seen your plan for Complete Streets. How different will it be? You know what I mean? Do you have some set of plans that you can distribute here to tell us what it's gonna look like?
So the Complete Streets plans are on the website, and that is like full concept. You know, if we out of the money wider sidewalks, bring the lanes down to two lanes, put in medians, we don't have the money right now. So we're looking at any kind of cheap way that we can still reduce speeds. So we're looking at the asphalt humps from state DOT. We're looking at, you know, some kind of makeshift delineators to make a median, which would still kind of slow them down, but it's just not the full concrete, which is what we want, right? We want the full concrete, so there's no maintenance, the delineators don't fall down, people still can't run over them. Those are more long-term. It's just a matter of funding. But the overall plan should still look the same as was proposed in the Complete Streets website. I don't know when that will happen, but we're trying to do little things here and there. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the board? How about from the others?
Chairman? This is Cora. You can't see me. I'm having trouble getting on. So, yeah, you have my phone number probably on the screen. Seven oh three area code, but I'm here.
Okay, fine. Do you have any questions for the DTS?
Um, no, but when it's appropriate, I'll give the Ompo report.
Okay, great. Right after this. Okay, no other questions? Yes.
Chair Fong?
Yes, I'm here.
Hi, it's me, Wollin. I'm sorry. I'm on Zoom. I'm still at home healing from surgery.
Oh, well, no, thanks for coming on, yeah.
Well, thanks for chance for reminding me.
Yeah, well.
But I do have a question pertaining to Bates and New Wana, if I may.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so I believe that New Wana and Bates is part of my sub-district, because I'm Subdistrict Five. I'm looking at a Google Maps right now on Google Earth, and I know you were talking about the trees. Is those, are those trees on private property, or is it on city property?
Those trees are on city property.
Okay, so what would it take for the city to trim those trees as, um, Leanna just asked?
So we can work with, um, the Department of Parks and Rents or the Department of Facility Maintenance to see if they can bring out, uh, their large trucks to kind of trim the trees. We can take that back.
Okay, stay tuned.
So that, would that, would that progress our solar, uh, signals?
The hard part about trees is if you trim them down in six months, you know, they're back again. So it just needs require, I mean, requires much more maintenance. Uh, the area up here by Nua Uwenu and Bates, you know, there's just a, a whole line of trees. And those trees are actually kind of problem trees for us because they protrude into the sidewalk. So it's not like small trees that can, um, easily be maintained. They're huge and their roots uproot all the sidewalks. The proposal is to widen sidewalks to go around the tree. There's that one big tree by the, um, Aikido place that is just in the whole sidewalk. So the, the plan initially is to widen all that area to provide safe access. We don't want to remove the trees, because that would just, I mean, we already removed a couple of them, you know, between date and, um, HBA. But it's very difficult otherwise to kind of keep them limited enough to provide enough sunlight.
Carol.
Yeah, uh, in the past, every time they've tried to bring trees back, there's been a large outcry from the community. Don't touch our trees!
We got you, Wayland. Okay, what else?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Stay tuned. Thank you for at least doing something. We'll see how far we get by next month. And everyone's welcome to come on back. Were you gonna be coming back? No, no, no. Are you, are you coming back to give us a report next, next month?
Status of where we are on some of these projects.
Yeah, I'm looking for, uh.
I might not have an update in a month.
Okay, we'll give you two months.
Okay, maybe two months. If not me, it'll be Renee SPO, Complete Streets program.
And, okay, yeah, please, thank you. So we'll hold it off for two months. So don't ask any questions. All right. Anything else? Okay, uh, Ed? 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 Thought you were finished, huh?
I'm open, I'm available for questions. I was trying to learn more about that intersection back there. Sorry. Yeah, I mean, that's all, that concludes my report. I'm open to questions.
Any questions for Ed? Any from the audience? Somebody, Webex, somebody have a question for Ed? Guess not. No? What? No?
No, it wasn't me. That was for the last one.
All right, we're gonna move on, guys. All right, um, Councilmember Di Santos Tam. Anybody? From that office? Okay, how about, uh, Senator Rhodes's office? Everybody. Senator Rhodes's office?
Hello?
Yes, all right. Are you from Senator Rhodes's office?
I am. I'm the representative for Senator Rhodes tonight.
Well, you're new, aren't you?
Um, I've, this is my third, third month for this board.
Oh, you are new. All right, yes, what's the report?
Hello, everyone. A new update in 2024, 2025 COVID vaccine has been approved for use. COVID is now similar to the flu shots, as they target the most prevalent strain of COVID. Um, flu shots are also available, as the flu is particularly widespread this year, so get your flu shots. Uh, $1,750,000 in capital improvement project funds was released to the Nua Uwenu Elementary School to finance constructions for restrooms in Buildings L, M, and N. There are two active sites of little fire ants that were detected near the Oahu Country Club back in May and June of last year. And you can now test for these little fire ants for free by going to www.stopthethreat.org and request an ant identification kit. You can also call or click the statewide pest hotline at 808-643-7378, or by going online to 643pest.org. If your home tests positive for little fire ants, the Oahu Invasive Species Committee will conduct a survey of your property at no cost to you to assess the next steps. And please do not, do not hesitate to call our office at 808-586-6130, or to email at sendroads@capital.hawaii.com.
Hey, any questions? I have one. Just thank, uh, Senator Rhodes for keeping us abreast of the COVID, uh, you know, situation. You know that our Neighborhood Board is gonna consider him our COVID Senator, you know that. Keep us, keep us alive. Any questions?
Yes. I have one.
Donald?
Yes. Senator Rhodes introduced a bill for that sunshine law.
Uh-huh.
Uh, forgot the number is four something. Um, can you tell us where it stands right now?
Ooh, I am unsure, but if you would give me about two minutes, I could come back to the board.
It crossed over, it crossed over, uh, from the Senate to the House. Still alive.
Oh, that's Senator Kim, yes.
Yes.
You know, what's the bill about? What's the bill about? Go ahead, Senator Kim, if you know.
The bill is basically to allow board members, neighborhood board members to attend, um, meetings and so forth without having to, uh, have only three people there. And, um, so, yeah, that's basically it. Because right now you can't attend, right? You can only have, um, you can't have more than three people attend an informational briefing and so forth, because of the sun, the way they interpret the sunshine.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I missed you. What, what is the bill about? Real quick?
Can you guys hear me? You can't hear me?
Yeah, we can. I just understand you. Go ahead.
Okay, so, um, the, the sunshine law has been interpreted to say that you cannot have more than three people attend a, um, legislative hearing or, or some presentation and so forth. And so the bill allows neighborhood boards to be able to have more than three people attend as long as no decision is made and so forth.
Okay, I understand that.
Yeah.
Yeah, basically, if you have three or more, it's considered a meeting, then it'll be violating a sunshine law. So eliminate that. I, I thought the sunshine law is gonna be amended to say that we can, as a neighborhood board, we can ask questions, et cetera, et cetera. It kind of restricted us a lot.
From asking questions?
Yeah, that's great.
You shouldn't be restricted from asking questions. I mean, I know at one board meeting I was at, they said that if it's not on the agenda, you can't ask questions. I, I, I believe that's false.
Well, I know.
Just can't vote on a measure. You can't, you can't.
Yeah, I told my board, I'll let you guys ask questions. I'll take the heat.
Yeah.
Okay, but thank you very much. Donald, does that answer questions?
On that sunshine law, um, can you tell us what is the status? And can you tell us if that bill is gonna pass?
Wait, wait, wait a second. I don't want to be rude, but we did have Senator Rhodes's representative there. Are, are you finished? Senator Rhodes, rep?
She can answer. She knows.
Oh, okay.
Uh, I am unsure. So, if you, Senator.
You want to yield to Senator Kim?
If she'll take it, absolutely.
Yeah, fine, all right. Senator Kim, why don't you go ahead?
Yes, well, we don't have a crystal ball, and the bill did pass over to the House. I'm not sure what the referral is, so it will depend on the referral and whether or not the committees in the House want to take that measure up. So I encourage board members to go online and, uh, you can look up the bill. I'm sure we can put that in the chat. Uh, probably, um, Kathy is on, so she can put it in the chat, the bill number. Uh, and then know what the referral in the House, and you can send emails to the chairs of the committees that you want the bill heard.
Very good, thank you. Um, Senator Rhodes's, uh, representative, are you finished? If you are, I'm gonna ask Senator Kim to give her report.
Yes, Chair, thank you.
Well, thank you very much and welcome aboard. Senator Kim, you're up next, anyway.
Thank you. Uh, my committee report has been sent digitally to you, yourself, Chair, as well as your board members and to community members that are attending virtually can also send in their email for a copy of the report, and we will send it to you. Uh, in my report, uh, we'll highlight some of the information. The legislative crossover occurred on March 8th. Crossover means that all of the Senate bills, now there was 1,437 Senate bills, just Senate bills, and of that, 372, uh, passed from the Senate is now over at the House and is going to be heard at the House. Um, subsequently, the House sent over 374 bills over to us. So now we're currently starting our committee hearings to hear their measures. So any measure that is similar or exactly the same on both sides, uh, it'll go into conference and to be worked out if there's any differences. So we, we, that's where we're at. Uh, just wanted to highlight a couple bills, several bills that you might be interested in. Uh, we had two firework bills, uh, that passed over from the Senate. One creates a division within the Department of Law Enforcement, um, to focus on enforcement of illegal fireworks. And the other one repeals allowable uses of consumer fireworks by minors and increases penalties for their illegal use and sale. Another bill, Senate Bill 438, bans the construction of landfills over significant aquifers, especially over quality farmland. Uh, so I know we're all concerned about the quality of our water and that the city has been wrestling with where to put the, where to put the, um, landfill. And then, um, also, the bill that I introduced to eliminate legislative exemption from nepotism, Chair, I know you're, you're very interested in that measure, has moved over to the House. Now it's up to the House, and this bill really affects the House, um, um, still employs nepotism. So that's something that you can also, um, email the House on. And then Senate Bill 1216, this aims to reduce noise pollution from vehicles by strengthen, strengthening regulations against noisy mufflers and exhaust systems. Now, I know when I attended the town meeting with Representative Takanuchi, uh, many of the residents brought up the fact that there are a lot of cars that go down the pully, the exhaust, um, and, and mufflers, as well as motorcycles, uh, wake them up at night or keep them up. And so hopefully this bill will help to alleviate that. Um, so also, those, those are the summary of the bills. Like I said, there's 300 and, um, what did I say? 372 bills, so I can't go over them all. Uh, I did want to notice to you folks that there is going to be a e-waste recycling event. It is in Wana Lo High School on Saturday, March 15th, from eight to noon. I know a lot of you have, uh, probably, uh, computers or printers or stuff you want to get rid of, and you might want to go ahead and, um, take that over to Wana Lo. It also helps the school, uh, raise money. So with that, I'm open to any questions.
Well, first of all, uh, as the, uh, Chair of the State Ethics Commission, I want to thank you for pushing forth the, uh, the nepotism bill. For those of you who might not know what that is, it's a prohibition of, uh, any legislator from hiring or supervising a relative. And that's, used to be very prevalent. So thank you very much. We'll see what happens in regards to the House. Hopefully they'll adopt it.
Yes.
I have one question before I ask the, the board. In the fireworks bill, was there a provision that exempted cultural events? I didn't know whether it did or not.
I believe there is. Um, we're not banning it completely, yeah, so, um, therein lies the, lies the details. Um, so one, one, as I said, creates the law enforcement, um, depart, a division for law enforcement that focuses on illegal fireworks. And the other one, uh, repeals all allowable uses of consumer fireworks by minors, and it increases the penalties for their illegal sale. So it does still allow for, um, ceremonial and so forth.
Well, that's good. It makes us Pocas happy, you know, we love fireworks on certain occasions only.
Exactly. Control, control.
Questions from the board? Donald?
Yes, Senator.
Hi, Donald.
Are you for tourism or you're against tourism? The reason I ask is that I read in the papers that the legislature shouldn't make all these taxes and all that. And the thing is that tourism is our number one business, okay? Let's face it. Without the tourism, we don't have any other resources. So why are we keep on taxing the tourism? For little things or whatever, but, you know, I want to keep the tourism alive. But when I read the paper, I mean, the legislators, the senators, the representatives are putting all this type of taxes on the tourism, that now it, it costs the tourist to come here. And they, they paying lots of taxes, and I don't understand that. So are you for or against tourism?
I support tourism. That bill that was put forth was actually put forth by the governor, which increases the TAT. Uh, it starts out by increasing it by point seven five, and then it goes up the following year to 1.75. And I, I was not very supportive of that measure. Uh, the reason that that is so popular is because it passes it on to the tourists and because other areas that you go have high taxes, probably higher than ours. Um, I guess the governor and, and legislators feel that, uh, those taxes, uh, can in fact be absorbed by the visitors, and it's not gonna affect us. But at some point it will. I agree with you, you know? You can only tax the golden goose so much before it's gonna have an impact. Um, but there are also, you have to look at, what are the demands on the state? You know, we want to, we want to pay for this, we want to pay for that, we want to fund all these grants and easies. We want to fund housing and, and education and the University of Hawaii, and there's, so all these demands and not enough funding. So it's gotta come somewhere, you know, the pie's only so big. So therein lies it. Do we become more efficient, which is something that I push, that we have a lot of waste going on in government? Uh, and so we have to look at that. But, um, yeah, that, that's the reason, Donald.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? How about from the audience? Any from Webex? Senator Kim, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you all. Have a good evening.
You too. Next, Representative Takanuchi, are you? Jenna?
I'm online, Chair.
There he is, there she is.
Hi, good to see everybody, virtually. Um, oops. Okay, really quick, just some updates from previous things. Um, so my office continues, you know, to check in on the Liliokalani Botanical Garden encampment. Um, DOT, um, has gone recently to do their portion under the bridge. We're still following up with the city on that joint sweep, but I just want to let the board know that I have Kelton call every single month to ask them so that they know that we are watching it and that we are trying to prioritize that site. Um, I did want to follow up also. I know last time we took a question about the Nua Uwenu uh, stream bridge, um, the one near Bates Streets. Um, the City Department Facility Maintenance has it on their list of areas to clean, but did not have in, uh, a date scheduled. Um, when Kelton checked in last week to try to present to the board, but, um, they do have it on the list to get there and clean out the items under the bridge. And then I did want to follow up with, um, Board Member Christian. Uh, we reported the issue with the private trash companies leaving the, um, receptacles out in the streets. I wasn't sure if it was still happening, um, just wanted to follow up on that, if that was still happening, um, maybe at the end, um, or, or if it was resolved, or if we should follow up with them again, that the activity was still happening.
You want me to answer that now, or you want to wait till you're done?
I, after you, or, um, Chair, what do you think?
Well, as far as I know, it has stopped. Um, I do drive out in the morning, and I'm so sorry I didn't send you the pictures. I just realized it. Um, but I will keep tabs on that. Um, there was two, two residents in the independent living right there next to Liliokalani Stream that brought this up. So I'll kind of check in with them and see what they say, because they're the ones who's out there at five o'clock in the morning catching the bus.
Okay.
So I'll double check and I'll let you know. Thank you, Jenna.
Okay, yeah, let us know. Um, again, like, uh, the, the trash companies have been very, um, open, you know, working with community when we get the, when the reports, um, are kind of sent from our office. So happy to do that if it's still being a problem and working out solutions on that. Just let us know. Um, and then, just wanted to give a couple just smaller updates. Um, thank you to everyone. Um, I don't know if, um, somebody remember, last year I started doing these like tiny kind of like community hours across the district. I was calling them Park Talks. I would just go to a park and just be there, and we just talk story with whoever showed up. Um, we just had one this past weekend, um, or yesterday, actually, Sunday, at, uh, Nakualo Park up in Agleba. About 20 residents came out and we had some good conversation. Um, please, I- Please, everyone, I'll be sharing additional dates that I'll just be kind of in random parks if you want to come by. Doesn't have to be the one close to you if you're willing to travel a little bit, but sending out more of those dates later. And I did just want to flag one bill that I have that might be of interest to the board that's still alive, that's crossed over to the Senate. This is House Bill one two seven eight. It's money for the hazard trees on Department of Land and Natural Resources land. I know we have a lot of residents who live, you know, adjacent to state land, and DLNR was telling me that they, sometimes they have a little bit of a hard time getting funding together within the department to do removal when, you know, there's a report of a tree that looks like it might be in either a branch or a tree that might be, uh, there might be a threat of it falling. So this is just to get them a little bit of, hopefully to get them a little bit of dedicated money so that, you know, they don't have to kind of wait and cobble money together. They have some money to do that removal as soon as those reports come in and the tree, you know, is assessed and deemed like it should be removed. That one is actually scheduled for a hearing this week on the fourteenth at one P M in the Senate Waterland Committee. I'll put the link to the bill status page in the chat. If anyone's interested in submitting testimony, please do. Would appreciate the support for that. And then I just did want to share one other resource. You know, tax season is coming up, and just wanted to flag that the Volunteer Income Tax Assistance, VITA, program does offer free tax help for income tax. If your household income does not exceed eighty thousand dollars and some other requirements, you can get free tax help to do your returns through this program. These are volunteer CPAs and other people, you know, who have these pop-up sites. Usually you just have to make an appointment, you know, bring all your documents down, and they'll help you kind of process that. I'll put a link to their program in the chat. They have, again, there are some qualifications, so please check that. But then they do offer this help to people across the state. If you or anyone you know might need some of that assistance. And other than that, I'm happy to take any questions or any other concerns back to the office to work on.
Before I ask the board, first of all, I want to thank you for supporting the nepotism bill that was drafted, well, from the Senate bill about nepotism. I hope that the House does adopt it, because, you know, if the Senate thinks it's good, I, hopefully the House will think it's a good bill, you know, in regards to nepotism. So thank you for your support on that. Second question, second, second thing is, you know, that, and I want to thank you for the park. I call it the Park Town Hall, uh, Town Meetings up in the, not.
We're trying not to be formal, Chair. We're just supposed to, it's Park Talk because it's casual.
Okay, was there anything, I, I couldn't make the last one. Was there anything, any issues that we should know about that came up? I'm curious. If not, no.
Nothing, like a lot of things this board's talked about, you know, we, we touched bases about the, the break-ins and things that had been happening that this board talked about. We touched bases about, you know, speeding in general, things that came up at the speeding town hall meeting. So, you know, we, we are doing the follow-up for that as well. Nothing super concerning, you know, general park maintenance issues.
Well, nothing, nothing serious, that's good. That's all.
Yeah, nothing, nothing big, nothing, yeah.
Okay, great. Questions from the board? From the audience? From Webex? Not, Representative Takanouchi, thank you very much, Jenna.
Okay, thanks, everyone. Reach out anytime.
Okay, Representative Holt? Representative Hasi?
Hello? So I think Representative Takanouchi covered most of the, the major announcements. I guess I'll kind of open it up. Are there any bills or, or issues that, that you are all following and are concerned about that you'd like to discuss with me?
I'll ask the same question I asked Representative Takanouchi. There was a bill, a Senate bill in regards to nepotism. I'm assuming that, and I hope that you will support that in regards to the House.
Absolutely, sure.
All right, right. And did the bicycle ride finish, or was it coming up?
Bicycle ride is coming up.
Oh, I was going to ask, how was it, I guess? But you told me, you told us it was all downhill anywhere, right?
All downhill.
Okay.
As long as you have a ride back.
Thanks. Any questions for Representative Hasi? From the board, from the audience?
I think it's April twelfth, is the, um, bike ride.
You have a question, yeah, go ahead. Can you, could you come up and use the mic so we can all hear what your question is? Please introduce yourself.
Hello, I'm Kristy McPherson, and I know we're having a big event on Saturday morning at McKinley High School from nine thirty to eleven thirty regarding universal free school meals. And I know that the House Bill seven five seven did not pass, which would provide free school meals for all public school students. However, Senate Bill thirteen hundred is still alive. And so just wondering about that, your, your thoughts on that issue? Which would provide, which would provide meals for Alice families as well?
Yeah, so Alice families are asset limited, income constrained and employed. I think there's sixty percent roughly of what these households are classified as Alice households, which is a crazy number. One of the nice things about having a bicameral legislature is that you have a second chance at getting some of these bills passed. If they die in one house, sometimes we can keep it alive in the, in the, you know, using the Senate version of the bill. So I, I think the main question in order to, in order to make this happen is we need to figure out funding. The, we're, we're facing a really severe budget deficits because of the federal cuts to things like Medicaid, we're anticipating SNAP cuts. We're also looking at cuts, for instance, for things like free school meals. And I think it's incumbent on our legislative body to identify the appropriate funding mechanisms to, to make sure that all these priorities can, can be sustained.
Great. Questions? Board, audience, Webex? Not? Representative, thanks for showing up, thanks for coming. Oh, wait, that's somebody over there?
Yeah, that was me, Walen.
You have a question?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, yeah, hi, Kaika, how are you? I would like to know, even though the Salary Commission has approved the pay raises for the state officials, what is, what is the process and how is it going to be approved further? For one, I will make it for the record that I am against that because of such programs like this that we can't provide for the children, but yet we're going to give our, our governor a thirty-nine percent raise, and that is ludicrous, in my opinion. So I do know that legislators do work hard. I'm in there testifying, so I see what you folks go through, and I appreciate it. But at the same time, you will hear majority of the, of your constituents say, hey, this is a public servant position, as well as the governor. Where can we cut in pay raises for officials so that we can give back to the programs? I yield.
Thanks, Walen, that's a good question. Yeah, the, the pay raises, you know, the other thing that I'm thinking about with regards to the pay raises is that if things proceed as, as I'm sort of anticipating they will with the federal cuts, we're going to see a lot of unemployment. We're, you know, we're seeing the layoffs, we're going to see the, the, that's going to have a tremendous impact on our unemployment insurance system. We're going to see, you know, essentially elements, and I'm, I'm not an economist, but it, to me, it looks a lot like we're looking at a recession going forward. And in that context, it, it's really hard to justify, right? Really large pay raises for, for anyone. And so the, what I, so what I did, Walen, what, you know, my small part in this is I wrote a letter to the Salary Commission, right? Salary, I forget the appropriate, the full name of the commission, but I wrote a letter, and also there were three of my colleagues who signed on, suggesting that, that we tie legislative salaries to the area median income. With the idea that as we, you know, for instance, if the minimum wage increases or if, if the median wage increases because of, of a healthier economy, then that would allow for the legislator's salaries to increase commensurately. But fundamentally, I, I think that the legislature, that the pay of the legislature should not be a political process. It shouldn't be something where it is political in reality or in perception. It needs to be tied to a justifiable external metric. And I think that the, the well-being and the, you know, the compensation for legislators really should be tied to the overall health of our, of our citizenry, of our economy. So that, that was my suggestion.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions?
Thank you so much, Kaika.
Okay, if not, thank you very much again, Representative.
Another question, maybe a suggestion is tie the salary increases with the union members' increases. Do you know what I mean? They're getting three percent, you know what I mean? Or six on a good year, you know, right? And the other is maybe tied with the economics of the state itself.
Yeah.
Right? If it goes down, we take, we take a reduction in the salary, you know?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's basically what I was suggesting, is that we tie the legislature's salary to the, to the overall economy. I was also had an earlier version of the letter where I was suggesting that we tie the legislature's salary to, I was thinking teachers. That's sort of a, of a good kind of cognate, good comparison. Yeah.
Okay, any, anything else? You know how long it's been.
Chair phone.
You, you realize.
Just one more quick thing. I would like to have Senator Mercado, Kim, Donna, if you could also look into that. I, I know it's going to come up to you folks very soon, as well as Carl Rhodes and Jenna. Really think seriously about what the people are going through. You know, in two thousand and twenty-three, the City Council Salary Commission gave them a sixty-four percent raise, which I testified against. And it was because they were getting a forty-five thousand dollar increase per city council member. At that time, three council members refused the pay raise, but the other six took it. And yet we still see our city, our county, our, is struggling, as more so our education for our children. There's a lot of children, their parents cannot afford to have lunch, especially as expensive as it is. Several years ago, just really quickly, my grandson was in school. When I went to school with him to go eat breakfast, plain and simple, it was crap that they were buying and eating. And so I think that needs to change, and that was in light of what they were doing during the Obama regime as to how try to make kids eat healthy. But regardless of that, I mean, I, I think our financials right now in our state is really bad. I don't think a pay raise of thirty-nine percent for the governor and, and also other people who are in, in this commission recommendation. And that needs to really take a good backseat to what we can do for our children, our kupuna, and the average American, average Hawaii family that is struggling, and they're working two to three jobs. So if you folks could look at that, I would really appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Oh, by the way, you know how long it's been since we had a raise? Thank you. Okay, moving right along. Uh, let's see, Governor's Representative?
Oh, Chair, can you hear me okay?
Oh, yeah, hi.
Quick sound check. Guys, hi. Hi, Board, hope everyone's doing well. As always, you could find the newsletter at governor.hawaii.gov. Just going to summarize, a lot of topics that have been discussed already so far, but GOV did sign an executive order earlier this year in January to promote renewable energy in the state, addressing federal uncertainty and grid, grid stability concerns. Some of the key initiatives include achieving a hundred percent renewable portfolio standards by two thousand and thirty-five, and a target of fifty thousand renewable installations by the year two thousand and thirty, and streamlining permitting processes. Also, GOV did launch Operation Hire Hawaii. This is an expedited hiring initiative that's designed to help job seekers and those affected by the layoffs and the cuts and the different market changes that we've been seeing right now. So candidates can expect a great outcome from this. They can expect quick referrals to different hiring agencies for different job opportunities. And I included this website along with these different bullet points, but this website can be found at dhrd.paleton.gov forward slash O H H I. And that's all I have to report.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? For Governor's Rep? Okay, if not, moving right along. Anybody from Ed Keith? Yes.
Oh, you're going to Ed Case, I'm sorry. Go ahead. I was, I was waiting for Ompo, but I, you have one more.
Yeah, this, thank you for reminding me.
I, I didn't, I didn't check, yeah.
Cora, well, let me do this first of all. Anybody from Senator, I mean, Representative Ned Case's office? Okay, if not, let's go back to item number five, six, Ompo. I'm sorry, Cora, I nearly forgot.
Oh, no, no problem. I'm, I'm not visible, and I don't, I don't know what's happening. Have to talk to Camilla about my tech problems. Anyway, um, the meeting is, the monthly meeting is usually the first Wednesday of the month. It has been postponed until this coming Wednesday, the second Wednesday, because the staff needed to redo a lot of the figures because of uncertain federal funding. So we're, you know, we're starting to feel all these effects of uncertainty and cuts. And so, you know, they need to redo some of the documents that we're going to be reviewing. So next month I'll have a double report. Okay, that's it.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Any questions? Any question for Cora? Darren, you want anything to add? No? Okay. Any questions from the audience? Webex? Thanks, Cora, I hope you're feeling better.
Yeah, I'll try.
Okay. All right, on the agenda, number eight, approval of the minutes. I need a motion, first of all, any corrections to the minutes of February tenth, two thousand and twenty-five? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve. Move by Darren, is there a second? Second by Donald. Just show of hands, all those approved, the minutes of February tenth, two thousand and twenty-five, raise your right hand. Any opposed? No objections, motion's carried. Uh, let's see, we already finished on the new business. Okay, community organizations, Molea? St. Francis? Anakila?
Hello, hi. If anybody hasn't gotten one, there's some of the Anakila newsletters in the pile over there, and there's more here. So their spring session is going to start on the thirty-first of this month, and they're taking registrations right now. So if you are sixty years or older and want to join Anakila, now would be a great time. And just to encourage people, I just picked a few of the multitude of classes. They have over eighty classes every month. IT Help Desk, they have a couple of different classes for kupuna that want to learn how to use their smartphones or their tablets or their computers. And they have both Android and iPhone classes. They have a kataoka class. Do you really need to go to class for that? But anyway, I'm sure that it's way more fun than just sitting and learning. They have many, many types of exercise. One is called Fit and Flexible. And so that one is a little bit less physically demanding for those who don't have current physical strength. And then things as fun is hula. So if you have any interest in going, they, they would love to have you come in and sign up, and classes are starting at the end of this month. And then on the fourth, uh, I'm looking at the thing saying it says four one, which doesn't make sense because it should say five one. Okay, five one, May Day, May first, they're having May Day program. So they're also having a May Day program. It's always lots of fun with lots of performances and lots of the groups gathering together. Anybody has any questions?
Yeah, I, I was just, happened to. Yeah, I I was just happened to look at the class and club schedule. Oh, wow, you have a lot.
Yes.
Can you tell me, maybe not now, maybe later, what is Shambho Khan? Qinggen?
I I think that that is a type of exercise.
Yu Bu Yo?
I can't answer all of them now.
Curious, I mean, what is this? This is terrific. I see you have an African-American cultural club. That's interesting. Very good.
Yeah, it's quite extensive. And of course, then the favorite, latest favorite is pickleball.
Yeah, I saw that.
Yep. Yeah.
Any questions? Keep up the good work. None? All right, moving right along. Any other? Oh, how about Friends of the Liliha Library? Brandon, is that all? Is he on? Yes, yes, not. Other nonprofit organizations, anybody? Okay, announcements. Um, next meeting is on April fourteenth, Monday, same times, same place. Anybody have any other announcements for the good of the services, they say? If not, I entertain a motion to adjourn. Um, move by Dale, seconded by, I think it was Darren, 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 all right, all right. All is in favor, raise your right hand. Any opposed? It is twenty-two eight and the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for coming.